Call the Monday, April 23, 2018. Work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, would you call the most place?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Ludenberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. It seems like only yesterday that during my oath of office, 865 days ago, I envisioned and described a new Portsmouth where employees are courageous decision-makers with financial acuity to ensure cost-effectiveness, government efficiency, and protections of the city's financial resources. Tonight, we will continue providing vital information supporting the proposed FY 2019 operating and capital budget. The city's financial advisers from Davenport and Company, LLC, Mr. David Rose, Senior Vice President, Manager of Public Finance, will present the city's financial credit profile and best practices in budget. The goal of this presentation is to identify financial strengths and challenges of the city to further safeguard the city's financial standing, credit ratings, and its future. Mr. Kyle Lux, Senior Vice President of Public Finance, was to join us this evening, but he had a family emergency earlier today. We have with us Ms. Ellis Wood, an analyst from Davenport, joining Mr. Rose. The second presentation, at the April 10 City Council meeting, the city manager was requested to review the school's statistical data provided in the proposed FY 2019 budget located on pages, page 1-5, and report back on city spending per pupil for education. The third presentation, and final for this evening, Chief Tanya Chapman will present an update on public safety. Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm sorry, Kyle, again, as you indicated last minute. We have a handout of what I'm going to talk about, so I'm going to wait a moment while Ellis and I try to hand some of these out. Everyone has a copy, I take it? This slide? That's good. Okay. Thank you again. Pleasure to be here tonight. I will try to move fairly quickly through these slides. By all means, please stop and ask any questions or any concerns that you may have. When I finish my remarks, certainly if there's anything that we're not able to answer or you have other questions, just ask Dr. Patton and we will accordingly follow through. With that said, we're really going to talk about four major topics this evening. One, credit ratings, what your ratings are, why they're important. Second, talk a little about financial trends in the general fund. Then hit on the debt management of the city and finish off with pension and OPEB, which, as you know, are so critical to all local governments. With that said, under credit ratings, if you go to page four, if you turn, if you would, as Dr. Patton indicated, you're in the process now of working towards the 2019 operating and capital budget. We've had the good fortune of working with the city for about a decade, and as a result of that, we have looked at and evaluated and worked with various financial policies to make sure, again, that the fiscal health of the city remains strong. I think it's important to point out tonight that as I stand in front of you, I think the city is stronger today than it's been in a decade financially. It has made immense strides, and some of those I'll talk about, but that doesn't mean that we're able to rest on our laurels. We worry for all local governments that there's a time when recession will be inevitable again, and so, again, we want to be positioned as best as possible so we're ready for that when that comes around again, just by the pure economic cycle. With that said, as I think all of you may know, there are three major national credit rating agencies: Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. And you enjoy very strong ratings from all three of those. Why are those ratings important? We list it here. Number one, they are a direct factor in the interest rate that you pay for the borrowings that you do for longer-term needs, as well as refinancing when rates come down or as certain debt gets towards its maturity, we find we can refinance. The better the credit rating, the better off we are. And as you all know, at the end of last calendar year, you did a very solid refinancing, saved something north of $16 million. All of that because, again, there was great confidence in the city, the way you operate and the way you've met and continue to meet all of your financial policy guidelines. The second important thing about these credit ratings, they are, as we say, a barometer for the financial and economic health of the local government. And then lastly, but not least, as you continue to do your economic development, both of expanding local businesses that are here and other businesses that you hope to attract, they look at your ratings and they realize this is a place that is able to afford to reinvest in itself, it has the wherewithal to sustain itself, and we think that shows very, very important factors in why the credit ratings are critical. So with that said, what are the ratings? Here, we'll just show you it's AA2, stable outlook for Moody's, AA from S&amp;P, stable, Fitch, AA, stable. And what that really means on the next page, I think, is a little easier to grasp. The highest of all the categories is AAA. We see very, very few cities in Virginia that meet that criteria. There are some, but not too many. And then you see right below that, that very strong category, and you're right there, right in the middle of that very strong category. So, again, that is in all three of those ratings, and you'll see on the next page, as high as you've ever been in the history of having these credit ratings. So, again, all of those, by the way, the four tiers are all above what we call investment grade, and then tiers five through 10, there are actually 10 tiers altogether, are below investment grade, or sometimes referred to as junk status. And there's even levels there. But, again, you are basically one step away from being in the top tier of the AAA. Then lastly, I said the history of the credit ratings. If I could just walk over here, if I could. Again, you started back some 40, 50 years ago in the A range and then moved it up solidly into the AA2 range. Similarly, at one time, back in 2013, we had a negative outlook. That was cleaned up when you did your major reworking for the pensions. And so that was a very strong positive the rating agencies had. They liked what you did, they still like what you're doing. We're going to talk a little bit about making sure that that sustains itself and stays as a strength for the city. Then, again, you could see 2009 for Standard &amp; Poor's, you had a negative outlook, tying directly at that time to the very tough overall environment of the recession. You pulled yourself out of that and moved to stable, even got upgraded to the AA from that AA minus. So, again, moving in the right direction. Same thing happened for you with Fitch. You moved from that AA minus into the higher AA category. So, we are basically talking tonight about where you are and how to go higher, and that's by doing the things that Dr. Patton is talking about and the things that you have been doing. So that's the good news here. So what are those rating drivers that I've been talking about? There are really four parts. First part, the economy. That's the hardest thing for any of us to change in the short run. It's, again, it's more of a global, a regional element. So that's 30%. Interestingly enough, debt levels and liabilities is only 10% to 20%. So, again, that has actually evolved over the last few years to be a smaller component. But if you look at the last two, they comprise basically 50% collectively, and that's finances and fund balance, which you have a direct, immediate ability to change, for the better or for the worse. And then finally, when they talk about management, they're not just talking about Dr. Patton and those that are on the periphery of this table, they're actually talking about City Council as well. They mean collectively, management, the decisions you make, the policies you approve, the things that you're asked for. So those two factors, the last two, which I'm going to spend a little time on, literally are big, big drivers of your ratings. So, what we've got here is just a shortened version of the written comments, which are publicly available to everyone. Moody's, they talk about what could lead to an upgrade, and you can see right there, the continued ability to take care of your pensions. So that's critical, we see that, want to continue that mode. Second, substantially increasing the tax base. That's really the economy, that takes several years, we know that. But, again, if you're able to continue to improve in your financial performance, which you've done, stable, balanced budgets, which you've had, that's the type of thing they look closely at. And then finally, to the extent there can be some decrease in the debt burden, that's not so easy. We know you have any, like, a backlog of projects, like all local governments do. But, again, if you're doing it in a measured way, which you have been doing, they take comfort in that. What could lead to a downgrade? I'm not going to belabor it, other than to say that that number two, the reduction in reserve levels, that is perhaps the single most important thing the rating agencies look at. I would like to say a different way, they look at cash as king. They understand that if you have those wherewithal, those dollars, and your unassigned fund balance, that is the best way to be ready for the next recession, to be ready for some surprises, what have you, and so that is critical to them. S&amp;P, very much similarly, their rating, in this case, they talk about what their rating reflects, and I think it's important here, they talk about very strong management. Again, these are folks that look at local governments throughout, not only Virginia, not only the southeast, but all over the country. So for them to view that as very strong management, I think, is saying a whole lot about the people in this room. They see you as very strong liquidity, strong budgetary flexibility. And some of that has to do with our particular ways in which we go about doing the budget, we in the city. So all of that, they feel very good with. They talk about, however, a weak debt and contingent liability position. Once again, somewhat elevated debt levels, we have to be careful of that. Their opinion, they talk about here, they think that you're going to stay stable because they like the way you're doing things. They see you as continuing with the staff and the management and the council to have the, again, balanced operations, strong finances, and they even use, that's not our term, very strong management policies and practices. And as Dr. Patton said, we're going to be talking about further strengthening those policies and practices with your blessing over the next couple of months. Fitch, again, not to belabor it, they look at things a little bit differently. But interestingly enough, they see you as having a satisfactory reserve cushion. And I'm going to talk about that because one of the recommendations we're going to have is to up your actual cushion with the dollars you already have. And so, again, all three of these, if you'd like, we can certainly share with you their full reports. Each of them are about three to five pages, lots of statistics. But they have done their homework, they have both visited the city, we have visited with them, and the upshot is the things you told them you were going to do, you have followed through and have done. So your credibility with these rating agencies is quite high. So, again, some peer comparatives. What you'll notice here is that by and large, for example, Moody's, in what we'll call the regional cities in Hampton Roads, not a one of them by Moody's is a AAA. Again, on the S&amp;P side, you see several of them are AAA, and then, again, on the Fitch side, somewhat mixed. But we are very much in the thick of all of these ratings, and we intend to keep it with your help. And, again, you could see, one of the things that does work against you, you'll notice your population is shy of 100,000. That seems to be sort of a magino line, if you would. They feel better if there's a broader, larger population to be taxed, to look at through economic development. That's just something, it's the way it is. However, you look at Suffolk, and they are, again, got a couple of AAAs. They very much, in their minds, have a whole lot of area to grow. They have been growing to the fastest-growing, so a little bit different. But, again, you're in good company, and, again, focus is to continue that. Couple of things here we wanted to point out. Let's look at the way they look at you, and they see that on a per capita income basis, clearly. Portsmouth is somewhat below some of the higher folks, more in line, and slightly behind the Norfolk, Newport News, and Hamptons. So, again, some of the challenges that we have, that's why they talk about over time, trying to get the overall economy to be as strong as possible. Per capita income versus the United States, you can see where that is. Again, that makes sense. And then, full value per capita, and this is one thing I'd like to touch on, and that is that when you look at the city of Portsmouth, literally, half of all your assessed value is tax-exempt. That is the highest in the state. It puts pressure on you, nevertheless, you still operate with a balanced budget. Nevertheless, it shows that you're able to still operate. But if you had been, such as a Virginia Beach or even a Richmond, that has far less percentage-wise, tax-exempt properties, this number would be higher. And that's something they like to see, local governments be at about 100,000, if ideal. And, again, so there's a challenge for you. And it's really not one you can do a whole lot about. So I'd like to just talk for a couple of minutes now the second topic, which is some general fund financial trends. So what we did is we went back over the last decade, and on a year-to-year basis, and then overall, what you can see is basically the general fund has grown slightly under 1% per year. That's where you've been. So, again, almost flat to slightly positive year-over-year on average. So that's about nine tenths or 1%. On the good side, on the general fund expenditures, you've actually, over the last decade, grown on average of about a half a percent. So, once again, the type of thing you've done in terms of doing some difficult things, making some difficult decisions, you've basically kept that in a position, and that's why, I think, in part, they look at you, all three of them, and say, you live within your means, not a lot of extra dollars there, but you do live within the means and you maximize what you can do. So, again, wanted to point that out. So that then leads us to fund balance. And I mentioned earlier that fund balance is perhaps, these days, the most important factor for the rating agencies. And what you'll notice here is that on the right-hand side, you actually have a policy that says that you'll have 15% available fund balance, basically, versus annual revenues. The good news here is you're quite, very much above that 15%. And in fact, you'll notice there that even in some of the other little components, you're still considerably above. Having said that, we see this not only as a strength, but something we'd like to recommend, and we'll do that more formally when we come back, but moving that 15% upwards towards about 18% and 20%. You're already there, it will not require you to take and do anything differently than you do now, but we're going to talk, most likely, about going to 18%. That will be a strength that, again, gets further codified to give the rating agencies, as well as the overall cash flows, that much more as we move forward into the next fiscal year's budget and beyond. So, basically, the numbers here can be seen is, if you look at the proposed 2019 budget, your general fund revenues, if they're about 241 million, at about 51.5 million, that translates, as you could see there, into about 21%. Again, we like that cushion because I know, I've been here with you, there have been years when surprises happen, there are things that will inevitably happen again that we have no sense of right now, so we'd like to try to recommend that. I know it's easy for me to recommend, I'm not the elected official, and I'm not the ones that have to face everyone, but we really do believe that this will further make the city strong and will keep it sustained. So, it is sense of how strong you are. You can see there that the national median for the AA2s is a little bit above you, but with the exception of Suffolk, you're basically better than all of your peers, as well as Richmond, and we, again, we see that as one of those good offsets to the fact that so much of your property is tax-exempt and that you can't touch. See your tax rate, you can see how that's changed over time, you all know that a whole lot better than I do, but, again, you can see where we are and the position. And then finally here, where that puts you, that $1.30, slightly above some of the others, Hampton, Newport News, and the 123, 124, 125 area. But I would point out, as I've said earlier, their percentage of real estate that is tax-exempt is far smaller than yours. So you're really doing quite a lot at that 1.30. So, summary here, you have maintained a healthy position despite the modest growth. Again, your fund balance has been critical to your ratings, and we like that. It is, again, keeping with best practices of the national comparative. But I think importantly, after 2019, there's going to be some very strong pressures on your subsequent budgets. One of the things you've got coming up, as you know, is another school funding that, that's going to be in that 38, 40 million range. That translates into about $3 million of new annual debt service. So that's not the type of thing that can come from one-time revenues, it'll have to be coming from recurring revenues. But the other thing is to have the strong fund balance as an offset that, to look better than your peers, is important, again, as that offset. So, with the general fund, next steps, we're going with your blessing to look at enhancing some of these policies. And I said, I think Dr. Patton said it very well, in the next couple of months, perhaps sooner, we'll be back with your blessing to give some specifics on that. One of those, again, not necessarily going to be absolutely 18%, but at least right now, we're floating up that idea with the staff and with all at about 18%. We're talking about considering dedicating maybe a portion of any year-end surpluses going straight to the capital fund, or to the capital fund, which would, again, further add some institutional framework of dollars that keeps it away from the politics of things, but, again, allows you to further strengthen those capital needs that you have on a regular basis as a bonus for operating as positively as you have. Again, work to identify, as we say, ongoing revenues for cash funding of capital projects so that we don't have to draw down the unassigned fund balance. It is fine to draw down the unassigned fund balance within reason, but it would be ideal not to have to look to that very much for capital projects that recur. And then finally, continue with multi-year financial planning and capital. One of the things we're going to talk about at some subsequent date is both for the general fund and the utilities doing multi-year planning of their capital needs. So if I could do-
Why don't we pause here and see if there are any questions?
Yes. You mentioned moving up to the 18%. I mean, is that, what will it take for us to move the needle to, from AA to AA+ or to AAA?
Well, first off, that's a great question. You are, right now, as we said, at 21%. So if you move that needle, you will not have to take any other action as it relates to the dollars already substantial, and they're enough to do that. So that's the first thing. Now, as for your second part of your question, Councilwoman Burke, you asked about moving up to, let's say, the higher levels. I think what is going to take that is, number one, to continue to demonstrate the budget surpluses, number two, to continue to keep that fund balance and to enhance it. I think, number three, to have some multi-year planning for both the general fund and the utility enterprise fund. A real, I'll call it, an updated CIP, if you would, Capital Improvement Program. And then finally, which I'll talk about, is making sure the pensions, all the progress that you made when you did that when the mayor was the city manager, that that doesn't backslide, and we want to make sure of that particularly. I think that's going to be important, as well as OPEB, which I'll touch on in a couple of minutes. So those things.
David, do cities have a policy, a written policy? Do many of them have a written policy on the drawdown of the unassigned fund balance? And with that said, ours basically is open-ended, that we won't use it for any reoccurring expenditures.
Yes, sir.
Beyond that, are there any out there?
Well, we do see some of them out there, yes, sir. I'm talking about now more nationally, not just only in Virginia. But we see talk about, one of the things we mentioned a moment ago is that any surpluses, for example, might go directly to, let's say, capital projects, you know, before it goes to other things, or cash funding of capitals. We see things like that. We also have them talk about how they get replenished. If, again, you're going to be a drawdown, if you're going to have a drawdown below your policy, what's the timeframe and how are you going to replenish it? We see that as well. So we see things like that. So we're going to talk about, again, next month or two, specifics about enhancing just what you're asking about, Mr. Moody.
Okay.
We're going to do that. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that one of the downward impacts on the credit score is the reduction in the reserve level. What percentage, is that a percentage reduction? Is that an actual figure reduction? What do you quantify that?
I wish I could give you a specific answer, Dr. Whitaker. I think what the rating agencies are talking about when they say that is they want to be sure that if there's going to be a reduction from, let's say, just go with me, 20% down to 15%, that the reasons for that are not for recurring operating needs, but it may be for, let's say, a one-time capital project, maybe a one-time economic investment or something like that. So what they really care about is that you're not tapping into that fund to supplement an imbalance in your overall budget for your operating side. There is no exact number, though, and if there was, we'd certainly tell you, that says you have, let's go with me, you have 16%, that's acceptable, you know, 14% is not. They don't really operate that way. They want to see if you're at your policy, if you're above your policy, why you're, you know, in that range.
Okay, so when you refer to reduction, you're talking about reduction off of the 15%?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
And that is measured at the end of the year or?
So, yeah, so typically what happens is, there's a moment in time, which is June 30th, the end of the fiscal year, and so with your audit, that's why this is proposed, again, it's just an estimate, at the end of the fiscal, excuse me, end of the fiscal year, we'll know exactly what that number was on June 30th of this year, and that number, if you would, will be the number for the following 12 months, and we'll use that to work off of that. So, yes, sir.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. So, debt management. What we wanted to do here on page 28, I'll go to that myself for a moment, is to let everyone see exactly what the debt portfolio of the city looks like. And it can be lumped into three major categories. The first category is what we call tax-supported debt. That is essentially your general fund, if you want to think of it that way. The second is your self-supporting utility debt, and that is, again, the- And that is, again, the, that's the enterprise fund, if you would. User fees, those that benefit pay into that fund and that fund, again, takes care of all the debt service, which at that moment in time, which, again, we're using as June 30th, 2018, has about 120 million outstanding. So that doesn't work as a burden against your general fund because, again, none of those dollars are coming from the $130, for example, that you raise. That's not where it's coming from. And the last part is the pension bonds, which were done, again, back in 2013, and that's about $140 million. So collectively, all three of those components come to slightly under $525 million. Why do we break them into those components? Because there are different sources of dollars that are paying for all three of those, if you would. The pension fund, those are coming from your annual required contribution, if you would, and you've been doing that, you've been meeting all of that. And again, that is how that's taken care of. The utilities is taken care of the other way. And then finally, the tax-supported, as we said, that also includes the golf fund and the parking fund. We incorporate that as well, so just so you see there. So, having said that, what we typically do in this evening's discussion will be a focus on the tax-supported. So we're going to talk about that this evening. We certainly at a subsequent date can discuss the other two. But for now, we want to bring out some of the strengths and some of the challenges. So the first thing, you'll notice there in yellow, we show what's called a 10-year payout ratio. What do we mean by that? What that means is that 10 years from today, the city will have paid off basically 70 percent of all the principal of that debt outstanding. So give you a perspective for those that are listening that may not be as aware. If you're fortunate to own a home, and say your home has a mortgage on it of $100,000, the average typical homeowner has a 30-year mortgage, and after 10 years, roughly $25,000 or 25 percent is paid off in the first 10 years. We at the city, if you use that same analogy, if we have $100,000, if you would, for every $100,000 that we have, $70,000 is paid off in the next decade. So we are actually paying our debts off much quicker than a citizen might in a typical normal mortgage. And the reason for that, again, is because we want to be sure that we can bring on and take care of other capital needs that are inevitable, such as the school that is being talked about. So we're in a strong position there. Our policy calls for 50 percent or higher. So we are considerably above that. The second challenge, though, is that you'll notice that light blue, when we add in the interest and the principal, is not dropping down appreciably over the next several years, but yet we're talking about taking on what could be, for just schools alone, $3 million on top of that roughly $27 million of debt service. So again, we've got some challenges. We also have some strengths to start with as we look at our overall debt. So we've got several policies. What we say is that the tax-supported debt service as a percentage of revenues, that's a fancy way of saying, how big is our credit card? For every dollar that we have, we're not going to spend more than 10 cents per dollar on our debt service. And we meet that. So we're going to be underneath that, and you'll see that. We also say that the overall tax-supported debt won't be any larger than 4 percent of the overall city's market value. Again, we meet that. And then lastly, what I mentioned a moment ago, our 10-year payout will be above 50 percent, and we meet that and more than meet that. We do a very fine job, or you do really, a fine job of staying above that. So again, there's a legal limit that overall, the general obligation debt we've been talking about, whether it's voter referendum or not, cannot be more than 10 percent of the assessed value of real property. Again, we meet all of that. But again, we will talk some more about these things in detail at some later day. So just to give you, though, where we stand, I know I'm running probably late.
No.
I don't want to be too long, I apologize.
No.
Our credit card, if you would, as you could see, is slightly above 8 percent. So we've got some cushion. We also have some new needs. But again, you meet all that and have. Your tax-supported debt versus the budget, again, you look favorable. I think that's really important on page 32. You look favorable compared to the medians and to all those in our region. And then our net tax-supported debt versus assessed value, we are looking very strong as well. And as that goes down, that's a positive. We want this to go down. Make it clear, that's a strong, strong positive. So what I would say here is, once again, you can see where you are. You're in that overall mode, right in the middle of everyone. And so, again, give you a perspective. That payout ratio, if you want to be above that red line, and you can see where you are, another positive. And then once again, here in Virginia, you do a good job of it. Your neighbors do a very good job of it. Basically, you're a pretty conservative group in the Hampton Roads. And so, again, looks very, very good. One last thing I'd like to point out. You see where it says the national AA2 cities? Most cities do not have schools as part of their debt, which is fascinating. As a result, you'll see here, it looks like, again, they pay their debts out faster. We find, again, we have schools that we have to account for. So it tends to be a little bit lower for us and Richmond.
But the comparison with Virginia Beach or Norfolk or Richmond would be more apples to apples?
Yes, absolutely, Councilman. Yes, it would. And like I said, they do a very, very good job here in the area. The local governments do a very, very good job. So, again, a summary here, page 37. I think you can see it, we want to make sure that we do everything that we can to stay within our policies, if not improve on them. And we'll hopefully be talking to you about the new money and a strategy for all that at some later date. So my last section, I promise I won't be too long. Pension and OPEB update. So you have made considerable progress in the last five years. I'll have to tell you all, I've been in front of you and others, the funding level of the two closed pension funds were at lows of statewide lows, 28 and 32 percent, when you took the actions you did. You incorporated and improved on governance, investment policies, you did a number of things, and finally, you also made some actions with OPEB. So with that being said, let's talk about OPEB first. You're not out of the woods, but you're in real good shape. Your policy, basically, as it's evolving, is basically to make your annual required contribution over the next several years. And what is being proposed this year is going forward in the future years is to do a 1-2-3 policy approach, which is to take $1 million next year towards that from recurring revenues, $2 million the subsequent year, and then $3 million the year after. That will be enough to get you inevitably to a point where there will be no OPEB liability anymore in a number of years. However, this particular year that you've had, you took about $1 million to $1.5 million, I'm not sure the exact number, but I remember, out of your unassigned fund balance to take care of that. That's the type of thing, again, that under Dr. Patton, you're moving away from. So that's what we want to continue to see. So that's the positive there with OPEB. And again, it's going to need to do that going forward. We're going to recommend doing that. Now, with regard to the pensions, here you are, that's 32, that was about 28 or so. And by virtue of the plan that we worked with you on and then Manager Rowe, you went up to almost 80 percent where you are today. Take a little closer look, though, we've backslid a little bit. We want to make sure we move back towards 80 percent on the right-hand side. So again, we're going to present some policies, some recommendations, so we move back towards that, sort of that magic, if you would, of 80 percent. Because I think maybe it was you, Councilwoman Simms, or perhaps Councilwoman Burke, asked, I think, about, maybe it was even Mr. Moody, about ratings or what have you. We worry that if that slides, then that could hurt your credit ratings. And that's, and not, there's no direct number there of Dr. Whitaker, that type of thing. But we know that we want to keep closest to the 80 percent, and that's what we want to do. So with that said, again, we want to be sure that all the progress you've made gets us to 80 percent. We'll talk a little about COLA funding approaches the next time we're here. And again, establishing what you're doing now in OPEB trust to make sure that all of those monies are safeguarded, moving in that direction. And so, again, we like what you've been doing and want to see you continue to do that. So that's our total presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the OPEB? You mentioned, you mentioned that it's a 1-2-3--
Yes, sir.
--step that you're recommending. So was it by law that we had to have an OPEB trust created by June 30th?
You may want to talk about that in terms of it's by policy that, moving towards that, sort of best practice.
Okay, so it wasn't required by law that we have it created by--
There may be some things here that I'm not aware of with the city of Portsmouth, but we're all, we've been moving in that direction.
Okay, and so for this upcoming fiscal year, it is a $1 million contribution you're recommending, and then next year's two, and then three in the third year?
Yes, sir.
And every year after that.
Because I thought that the budget that we are going to be voting on for next year has a $3 million OPEB allocation.
No, we have established our OPEB with Virginia, F M L VACO. That's where that $3 million is, to establish that OPEB.
Right.
Because we've established it, now we're required to make a contribution.
Right.
Our contribution is $1 million proposed now.
Right.
In the 19 budget, to move to where we should have started, and many cities started their OPEB fund in 2008, we're proposing to put in 2020, $2 million. After 2021, $3 million. And every year after that, to keep and reduce the city's liability, it will be $3 million.
So the 18, 19 budget, that is not a $3 million contribution?
No.
So the 18, 19 is the $1 million?
One, two, three.
So the budget that was presented, proposed, did not have a $3 million contribution in it?
The--
The proposed budget?
This budget.
18, 19.
No, not the 19 budget. We're not proposing a $3 million. We've established the fund.
Right, right. It was established. And then I thought that in the presentation that was given, that we had to fund it by $3 million.
It is established in that that $3 million is already a part of the establishing the fund now. It's not anything in the 19 but the $1 million.
So you're saying we put the $3 million in this fiscal year?
Yes.
But I thought that it was proposed a 1-2-3 step.
No, we had to establish the fund, which we've established, which you all approved at the last meeting. Now, in 19, because we are in the fund, we're required to make a contribution. We asked to transition it out over three years because we could not afford to put $3 million, $3 million right now. So we're putting in a, proposing in 19, a million, and 20, $2 million, and in 21, $3 million. And every year after 21, until, I'm saying perpetuity, a long time till we can clear it all up, there must be a $3 million contribution--
Okay.
--into the OPEB.
Okay.
It's got to.
Okay.
Other questions?
Mayor, just to reiterate what Mr. Rowe said, we are working with Davenport in three key areas, as he has indicated. And over the next couple of months, in June and July, we're looking for the team to come back, where we're working with them on development of pension and general fund policies, developing a capital spending plan, and then developing a capital plan for public utilities enterprise fund. So we're continuing to work and will be coming back to bring these processes to your attention for your approval and consideration.
I did have another question. You mentioned that there is a capital fund that you are discussing as far as putting the surplus of the general fund into this capital fund. Has there been any discussion in regards to a revenue sharing plan with the school system?
Haven't gotten to anything of that nature yet. No, Mr.--
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Bill?
In the COLA funding, when do you anticipate that--
When do you--
--plan--
I think, again, we would like to present that simultaneous, again, with the general fund recommendations and the pension at one time. So that would be next month or two.
I would say end of July, Mr. Moody, or 1st of April.
You mean August?
With all of these that we're working--
First of July or--
August, not April. August, I'm sorry, it's only A. But we're working now, and that's our, the June, July, August timeframe. And we won't come back with these all at once. These will be in parts.
We could go back to page 21.
Yes, sir.
Just looking at, looking at across the top, we're the unassigned fund balance, where budget in 18 was 57, and it goes down to 51 in 19. Is that because we're spending money out of the unassigned fund balance?
So what you have between 2018 and 19 is you have a number of one-time expenditures for capital-related purposes. In fact, we even talked about that. There are so myriad, it's not like there's one particular line item that says--
True.
You know, so just so you know that. So that's, and then part of that, though, also, again, will be, as Dr. Patton talked about, the $1 million of what we were just talking to you all about with the OPEB. So the goal will be for 2020 to not rely on that--
On that.
--to get recurring revenues. So again, we know that, you know, 2020's going to be a challenge as well.
It's going to be a challenge.
Yeah. On page 19--
Yes, sir.
There's a note at the bottom where you highlight that education expenditures increased from the 39.85 in fiscal year 2013 to the 52.4.
Yes, sir.
What was the purpose of highlighting that?
Basically, we just wanted to show for the major components, because education, as you know, is, for you and others, is literally the single largest, you know, line item, if you would, for the general fund. So we wanted people to see how that has trended. And then the second thing is we wanted them to see how debt service, because that's another major component, how that looks. That's why we did that.
Well, the reason why is because it makes it look like it, it looks like it's a significant jump. But the previous year, the expenditure was at 49.5 million. Then it went down to 38. So it really didn't, that's an artificial leap there from 39 to 52 as far as the trend, because the trend prior to that was in around the 40,000 range. And then when, when you look at, if you're going to look at the trend on page 18, your previous slide, when you look at the total general funds revenue and the increase, that trend from 205 million up to 222 million, that's a, that's a significant increase. But you see not a similar increase when it comes to, to education. And so if, you know, if you're going to point out some trends, that's why I was asking you about the revenue sharing plan, because it seems like there's been some significant gains in the general fund that is not corresponding with how we're funding education, particularly with the level poverty that we have in this city.
I believe there'll be a presentation this evening on schools. I believe there's going to be some discussion on that. And we certainly, you know, again, through the right channels, can come back and take a look at some things in more depth. But I think the schools is, I believe, tonight, someone's going to be, has done some homework on that in that regard.
Trends.
Well, I just wanted, just wanted to point that that trend doesn't start at 39.
Understood. Understood, understood. But it shows, you know, if you look at the last five years, again, you have made up some significant ground. The overall population of the schools has come down, yet the dollars for schools have stayed stable, if not gone up a little bit. So, again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I think you'll see sort of the, some of those numbers and how they look in a few minutes, I believe, I believe.
All right. Next time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. You ready? This is Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight's presentation is a City Council report back on Portsmouth Public School trends. During the April 10th City Council meeting, City Council requested that the City Manager report back to you and review the Budget Strategic Initiative Education, specifically highlighting the Portsmouth Public Schools' performance data provided in the proposed FY 2019 budget located on pages 1-5 in the City Manager's Budget Letter and, and the book, and trends on the city's spending per pupil for education. The average daily membership, or ADM, for Portsmouth Public Schools has been on a decline. It has declined at an annualized rate of approximately 1.2 percent for the past 18 years, and is projected to decline 1.9 percent for the FY 2019 budget year. The sources of data for this information is the Virginia Department of Education reports from the Direct Aid Payment calculation templates between the years of 2002 to 2019, and the Portsmouth Public Schools' FY 2019 proposed budget, and the MBCON School Facility The local funding support has increased annually by 3.1 percent, based on a five-year average. Although the city's local share increased over this five-year period, the average daily membership continues to decline at an average of 1.49 percent.
Dr. Patton, can
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Oh, excuse me. All right.
So, the way this is calculated, if, if, in a, in a round number, if we're given the same flat amount of money, year after year, but the ADM reduces, that means the per pupil cost goes up?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm
Yes.
thinking this right. Okay.
Okay.
Funding per pupil.
Funding per pupil, yes.
Yes. Okay, now I go to this. City Council, in your big four things from your retreat, you've remained laser-focused on education. One aspect to show your focus is to compare the local funding per pupil versus the city operations per capita. As you can see on this chart, Portsmouth funding to Portsmouth Public Schools is double the rate of increase over city operations. Over the last 18 years, the local share to Portsmouth Public Schools has grown at an annual rate of 5.4 percent compared to city operations at 2.8 percent. The Standards of Quality, or SOQ, are the guidelines by which the General Assembly allocates money to school divisions to provide quality instruction for students across the state. The SOQs are what is required by Virginia schools to meet minimum academic performance measurements and define what every school division must provide at least for the students and employees. The Composite Index represent a locality's ability to fund its share for education. Portsmouth possesses the lowest Composite Index within the region of the four benchmark or comparative cities, Norfolk, Hampton, and Newport News. And when compared with the benchmarked urban localities, Portsmouth funds local education 147 percent above the required local standards of quality, as determined by the Virginia Department of Education. Each year, the state calculates the amount of local operation funds required to meet the SOQ funding requirements, based on March 31st ADM and the per pupil amounts for each fiscal year. For the FY 2019 proposed budget, the required local effort, as determined by the state, If the city were to only fund schools at this amount, per pupil cost would be $1,795. In the FY 29 proposed budget that I presented on March 26, I recommended $52.8 million, equating to a per pupil cost of $3,992. If you look at the difference between the state, what the state indicates is required by the local effort for FY 29, and what I propose, the per pupil cost is double the amount the city is required to pay, based on the state's calculation and the Composite Index, a difference of $2,196. When looking at the funding across categorical areas for Portsmouth Public Schools, the majority of the funding received by the schools is allocated toward instruction, which is the highest among the comparative cities, and lowest among allocations for administration. Based on the 2017-2018 Teacher Survey, Salary Survey Report issued by the Department of Education, Portsmouth leads with the highest average teacher salary among the urban cities in Hampton Roads. The average salary for teaching positions is up 9.5 percent over 2017. It is higher than the state's average of $50,834, and higher than the average for all school divisions of $56,855. PPS is comparable to the number of teachers that hold masters and doctoral degrees and the pupil teacher ratio. Portsmouth Public Schools ranks second among the comparative cities for fully accredited schools, and is comparable with promotion rates and the number of high school graduates continuing their education beyond obtaining the diploma. When we look at the SOL pass rates for all grades, we will see that Portsmouth Public Schools students are right there, measurable with performance with the other comparative Here are the takeaways from the Portsmouth Public School trends. City Council continues to fund Portsmouth Public School as a top priority. Local funding growth outpaces the state. Local funding per pupil is twice the per capita funding for city operations. School funds are allocated efficiently across categories, and schools are performing competitively on SOLs when compared to other neighboring cities.
Dr. Patton, I have two questions. Back on your slide nine, when it talks about all the, the teachers with masters and doctoral degrees, and the pupil teacher ratios are all fairly similar with their neighbors, but maybe I don't understand what a provisionally licensed teacher is. Ours is at 8 percent, and some of the others are at like 4 and 6. Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Give me just a moment, I can answer that. Provisional licensed teacher, utilizing the budget personnel information from FY 2018, from Portsmouth Public Schools, those are teachers that have a degree. They have a college degree. And as Dr. Bracy explained to me, I may have a physical education or a exercise science degree. However, I want to teach, and with my exercise science degree, I want to be a physical education teacher. I can be hired as a physical education teacher. I have a degree, so I'm paid comparable to another teacher. However, the state requires for me to maintain that position, I must pass the test, and I have three years to pass the test that are required to become a physical education teacher. So I have full responsibilities as a teacher, but I have to pass the test to be a permanent teacher.
And they're compensated the same as
Yes, they are. They do have college degrees in an area, and so
So we want that number to be lower?
Yes.
More like
Yes.
4 or 5 percent? Okay. All right, thank you.
Is that a state test they must pass?
If, Mayor, if I may, I'll let Dr. Bracy come forward and answer that, because he explained it to me, and he, I did tell him I could teach physical education, but he said, "Doc, you have to take the test."
Also, how long can they stay
In provisional status.
In provisional status?
Good evening, members of council. The provisional, as Dr. Patton explained, is, to answer your question, we want that number lower, because they're, they don't have all the, the training as a teacher coming right out of a teacher education program would have. They didn't take some of the prerequisite courses as a certified teacher coming right out of a teacher ed program would. They have a degree that's comparable that will allow them to come into a related field. But they have to take courses to, in order to get certified by the state, they also have to pass a praxis test, where Virginia sets the, sets the cut score.
So that's a, that's a state
Yes, well, it's, it's, the test, praxis is, is across the US. But each state selects what their cut score is.
And how long can you keep a provisional teacher?
Three years.
And then they got to go?
Yes.
Need to pass the test or they get
Yes.
But they get paid the same as, as somebody who is
You do, because you, you have a provisional license, and the state gives you that, that right to get paid.
Okay. I have one more question that maybe you could answer.
Sure.
Other than, can I ask one more?
You may.
On Dr. Patton's slide before this, slide number eight, where it talks about, you know, the folklore in the community is that, you know, Portsmouth Public Schools spends way too much on administration.
Mm-hmm.
And clearly, by this slide, not only do, do you not, but maybe Hampton does, but, but Portsmouth doesn't. My question is, who, who is the administration? I think, in my mind, I think of administration as like the, the reading specialist, and the guy that pays the bills, and all that, but that looks like it's a much smaller group.
Yes, administrators are principals, assistant principals, directors, coordinators, assistant superintendents, superintendents, along those lines. That's what, those are administrators. Not, you can't look at support.
Office staff-type finance people are not administration?
Well, those, those are. Those are, those that work in the, the finance department, but not the support.
Would work in this building, but not out in our school.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Now, your director of accounting, our CFO, those are administrators, but the support staff that works in there, they're not.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker had his hand up almost at the same time as, as Vice Mayor Simmons, so Dr. Whitaker.
Mine was for Dr. Patton.
Okay.
If there are no more questions for this
Yes, is yours related to the provisional?
Yes.
Okay.
Going back to the provisional number, at the end of the three years that they can stay in that category, what is their turnover? How many actually move up to get the required certifications?
I don't have the exact figures on that. We do have, we do have some that completes the process and becomes a certified teacher. But in that three years, even though they were provisional, and if they don't meet their standards, then those numbers will reflect in, in our teacher
Turnover.
turnover rate.
Okay, but we don't know what percentage in that turnover rate falls into the provisionally licensed teachers that failed to get the certification. Is that correct?
I mean, we can, we have that, we can get that information, but yeah.
I think that would be interesting to see what that rate is.
Yeah, I just don't have it with me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Whitaker has a question.
I'm good.
On page 11, on page 11, I say 11.
Page 11.
11, yes, I say 11.
Okay, yes, sir.
Page 11. It says, "The local funding growth has outpaced the state." These are some trends that you're giving. What's, what's the purpose of, of these trends? Are you just giving information, or is it to try to show some effort on the part of the city of what it's doing in education? What is
Well, as I indicated, in the budget book, 1-1-5, we have in there, actually, a strategic focus or trends of the city over a period of time, and its efforts, how it has funded the schools. So this information provides, with data provides facts about when it is said that the schools are not funded at the level that they should be. And when we look at where the state says, based on Composite Index of the frame that I showed you, and of all of the benchmark cities that we use, and as we all know, Portsmouth is a city unlike any other in the state that has the least amount of taxable land. These are just data and facts of, of how the funding has progressed over the years.
Right, well, the reason I ask, because, you know, this is being presented to the public
Yes.
And how that's interpreted, because the, because the school system has made a request that, as we know, has not been reflected in the budget that was recommended. And, and it appears that we're trying to paint a picture that the city has been doing its part. And so when you put up a trend saying local funding growth has outpaced the state, what that hasn't taken into account is that there has been a decrease in funding from the state. And so that's not, that's not a, that's not something to really measure and be proud, because the state has, has cut education significantly. And also, that third point, where you said local funding per pupil has outpaced the per capita funding for city operations, I don't know what type of comparison you're trying to make there, because if you're talking about per pupil, the school system has about, what, 14,000 some students?
14,000.
And if you're talking about per capita, are you speaking of 96,000 citizens? That's not a, that's not comparing apples to apples. You, you don't have the same point of reference there. And so it gives, it gives a conclusion that, when you said that it has outpaced per capita funding for city operations, I don't, I don't know what you're trying to conclude with per capita funding when you're looking at that across 96,000 some residents versus 14,000 students. And, and then on your, your slide, I'm not clear on your slide where, page, page And then on your, your slide, I'm not clear on your slide where, page, page four, on page four, the figures that are presented here are not consistent with the figures we just saw from the report from the financial advisors because I'm not clear, how in 2014 is it 47.8 million? That's not the figure that the financial advisors just presented.
I saw the financial advisor's figure that was different from ours, but ours is coming from, Mrs. Oglesby, would you come forward, please? Ours is coming from data that has been received from not only the state numbers, the...
But where is theirs coming? I mean, they're our financial advisors, so shouldn't those figures be consistent?
I, when I saw that, I saw that that was a different number than what he had in his. But I, I did not see this report before it was presented, Dr. Bracy. Dr. Whitaker, go on.
Good evening, members of council. The 47.8 million comes from the original appropriation that council gave to schools, which was the 46 plus the 1.3 for the assistants or whatever positions that they requested. And then later on that year, council gave an extra half a million dollars to schools because it was something about they was going to be short on cash, maybe about $45 in the bank. And we took and gave them an additional half a million dollars that year. So this is based off of appropriation that city council gave.
Yeah, because, well, the, the figures from the financial advisor that they presented, it's showing 50.5 million for fiscal year 2014.
We use appropriation. I don't know if they use CAFR or...
If you're going to speak, please go to the...
Come over here. He's looking at his number. Do you hear him?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I do recall in looking into some of the historic numbers here, some of it had to do with a timing difference, I believe, between crossing fiscal years. So that the CAFR, you know, if you all reappropriate an unspent balance to the next year, your appropriations were consistent year to year, but there were some timing differences in the reported CAFR. And I believe that was the year, but I can confirm that. I recall researching that and finding that there was some crossing of the fiscal years.
And also add to, Dr. Whitaker, back in 2013 and 14, that was when they did some changing from the Gatsby rules. And so you're seeing a little bit of picking some elements of that up a little differently with regard to your annual CAFR. So we may have used, again, they use certain sources there in those couple of years when it was all evolving through the CAFRs. But you'll notice here, the last couple of years, we're on the same level exactly as they are, once that all got fully transferred over, so.
Yeah, well, that makes a significant difference in how you conclude with the per-student increase. And, I mean, the local funding has increased annually by 3.3% over five years. That, that figure, I'm not interpreting it, that figure isn't correct. And what are we trying to establish by that?
These figures are correct. What you see here are the correct figures. I believe that what was referenced in the CAFR had to do with some timing differences across fiscal years, but these are the accurate figures. That's why you see the difference between what's been pulled out of the CAFR and what you see on the screen.
Yeah.
So these are accurate.
Yes. So on slide number three, I guess, Dr. Patton?
Go back.
The student population trends with the average daily membership. We're looking at the declines, the 1.9 decline is projected for the school year, for fiscal year 19. And I guess what I'm trying to figure is if the numbers were up, if the average daily membership was up, we would be getting a certain amount of money from the Virginia General Assembly. But because we're not, I mean, I don't know if our city or if any other cities are looking at ways to kind of, you know, where does the money come from when we don't get it from the Virginia General Assembly, but we still continue to fund that? How do we make up that gap area where we're not getting that funding from students not attending school?
One, one of the things that Dr. Bracy has called to my attention at the beginning of the year, that in the 2020 school year, the schools accreditation will be tied into attendance, am I correct, Dr. Bracy? And so already, with his direction, we have, we are hosting a group, which we've met twice, to begin to address the issue of attendance of our kids coming to school. With that said, the state, no different than with schools, no different than with behavioral health care, no different than with social services. When we look at client decline in social services, the state reduces its support to positions and funding. When we look at decline in ADM, the state reduces its funding. And so if, when we can get our students that are here in our school system to come to school and come to school consistently is, it has been explained to me, I was thinking when I first came here, the March 31st was a one day, get everybody to school on that day. But I've learned that the ADM is taken from the first day of school all the way, the average, all the way through to the March 31st timeframe. So we've got to get the kids in because that is what they measure, their funding, and they will continue to decrease that amount. And it's our responsibility to get the kids there so we can get the state's money. Because as we all know, and as we presented, we are challenged as a city with how much we can do.
Right.
And so when, when we, if we can get six more million from the schools, from the state for schools, that, that's a big help.
But because we haven't taken that money away that we're giving to the schools, that would still be like we're giving above what would be required.
Right. If this average daily attendance is decreasing, then this council has not taken a dollar away from its schools, from our schools.
Right.
So that's correct. And the average daily attendance is decreasing. I mean, the truth is the truth. We've got to get our kids in school.
Say that again. You said the average daily membership is decreasing?
Yes.
And council is not doing what?
Well, I didn't, I said, I didn't say anything about council. I said the average daily attendance is creasing, and we have got to get our kids in school. And that means me working with the schools, trying to find ways to deal with getting our kids to come to school.
Okay, Bill.
Mayor, that's good information in the presentation. I would like, if there's consensus, to have Dr. Patton present this tomorrow night at our meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You mean at 7:00?
Yes. At 7:00 maybe.
Valuable information.
Yes.
Yeah. That doesn't, that doesn't address the, the fact that you still have a request that came from the school system to increase the pay for our teachers. And I just find it to be disingenuous to try to present that the city is doing all that it could do, but yet we're level funding. I find it particularly disturbing, as again, in a city that has such a high poverty rate and has gone on record saying that we are for addressing the issue of poverty, and one of the major addresses of poverty is education. And if, if we're going to, say we want students to be in class, we also got to make sure we have quality teachers in the classroom, and that's going to require that we, we pay them. And, and so I'm not convinced. This, this does not suggest what the city has neglected to do, it's suggesting the more that we need to do.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Herr.
This suggests to me that school board, city, all need to step back and, and look at where we headed, look at are things sized, are things, do we have a proper number of schools? The only other place that you can get students from is out of private schools or, or those that, you know, just aren't going to school or homeschool. So that's far, that's, that's a pie in the sky to think that we're going to get students those ways. So the only other thing we need to do is step back and look at the entire situation to make sure that everything is at the proper levels. We also see now that, you know, the administration isn't the issue. It's just the overall numbers of schools, the way the attendance is declining, and whether or not we have proper sized our school system. But we just can't continue to, in my mind, we just can't continue to, continue to increase and increase and increase without stepping back and taking a look at the picture now and in the future.
You know, on the declining enrollment from one fiscal year to the next, what does it cost in the most recent comparison in state funding?
I would have to get that, Ms. Moon.
I think it would be a good number.
I could have that to you tomorrow.
To Councilman Smith's point, I agree. I think that's the elephant in the room is how, how are we going to reverse that downward trend? Because that's going to have all kinds of implications on schools, the number of schools. If we can't tackle that and attract more students from the private sector or the ones that are just not going to school when they, in that period through March the 31st, we're going to be hurting financially.
Well, some of that was addressed in the, the study that the school system had done about the...
MBCON.
Thank you.
Their, their community composite summary, I think it's about 10 pages, has great...
Yeah, they had the potential there.
Great data.
We just need to seize the potential.
Well, Ms., this has been going on for a lot longer than recent years because when I was in high school, we had five high schools in the city. We're down to three. Do we still need three? You know, it's a lot of things we're going to have to look at, and that's not just truancy issue, that's just based on the population and the students in the schools.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, we will have Chief Tanya Chapman to come forward and give us an update on public safety.
And this will be on the agenda for the morning.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Can you give us a chance to think about this if we have other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council, Dr. Patton, Mr. Ashby, good evening. I'm here to give you a quick update on our public safety. So this chart represents the total Part 1 crimes for 2017. So due to the diligent efforts of the members of our Portsmouth Police Department and the assistance of the community, we were able to reduce violent crimes by eight percent in 2017, which shows right there, in comparison to 2016. Property crimes increased by one percent, which resulted in a break, break even point for total crimes for the year. I'll give you a few minutes to look over the...
Chief, what is a violent crime?
That's the next page I'll show you. Actually, the page after, I'll go through them in a minute. So this is as of year-to-date stat or figures from April the 16th, 2018. Once again, we talk about violent and property crimes. So as of 4/16, we are up in violent crimes for this year, a total of 16%, which is mainly a result of the spike in aggravated assaults, which are shootings, which I will discuss in more detail later in the presentation. However, property crimes have been consistently down each month, currently at 12% as compared to this time last year. Currently, we are experiencing a reduction in total crime of 10% this year. So to answer your questions, the violent crime category consists of homicides, sexual assaults, robbery and aggravated assaults. So currently homicides, although, although the graph shows four at the end of March, we are currently sitting at five, which is the same number we were at, at this time last year. Sexual assaults are up significantly, but they are all known acquaintances. Robberies are currently down by 22% and aggravated assaults, as of the end of March, were up by 32%.
Chief Chapman?
Yes, sir.
The, the sexual assaults is, is up...
138%.
Are you, do you think that's because there are more of them or there are more being reported?
I think there are more being reported at this time, yeah. And they're all known acquaintances, some type of familial relationship. So I don't know if it's a result of the Me Too movement, but we had a significant spike in January, and it's just been steadily being reported.
Yeah, okay. Which is good.
Would this figure make any, I mean, would it be any more prevalent if the, if they were not people that they knew? I mean, if it was just like, I mean, would this... It would be alarming if we had stranger rapes out in the street. We don't have any. That's why I made that distinction, that they were familiar relations. Not that it's any better. Right. But we don't have that fear that someone's walking down the street and attacking, attacking victims. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Chief, can we get by tomorrow what that figure was in last year this time regarding the, or do you have it there?
It's right here. It was 19, well, it was eight in 19. The figures are small, but the numbers are huge. So it was eight at this time last year, we're currently at 19.
And that's up 100...
And 38%.
Okay.
Other question. So the next chart shows our property crimes. So that consists of burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Property crimes have shown a steady decline all year, and we are striving to maintain this trend as the warmer weather approaches. This reduction can be attributed to the department's reorganization into geographical policing districts and holding individuals accountable for the crime in their areas in which they are assigned, which is done through our monthly accountability meetings known as COMSTAT. The district lieutenants are responsible for analyzing their crime patterns and directly, and directing department resources to address the crimes in the areas of their responsibility as well as educating their citizens. As a result of our department reorganization at the end of 2016 and assignments to specific areas, the green areas, which shows the reduction of the graph, have become more prevalent each month as compared to the map prior to the finalization of our reorganization. It is also start, it has also started a friendly competition between our district lieutenants to reduce crime in their area. Furthermore, reorganizing the former NIOs, which was their Neighborhood Impact Officers, allow the department to create and establish a Street Crimes Unit to assist our district lieutenants and the Community Engagement Unit, or Community Engagement Officers, which were your NIOs, to address crime in their areas of responsibility. So showing all the green is actually very good for us. So this map is a map of our five homicides that we've had thus far this year. So of the five homicides, three have been solved, the three in green have, and arrests have been made. We are still working on leads from the others. One of the unsolved homicides was at a local bar where we also had a recent shooting incident with multiple victims. We're currently working with ABC Alcohol Beverage and Control, as well the Commissioner of Revenue's Office on enforcement. And this establishment has only been open the past few months. The other unsolved homicide was a house known to be a NIP joint, and the owner was arrested for maintaining a disorderly house. The Crime Analysis Unit has been working with our Major Crimes Unit to define relationships and causational factors for the shootings in which several have been determined. So of these five homicides, we know that one was domestic related, two were disputes that led to a homicide, one is related to, one is related to acquaintances in a criminal conspiracy, and the other one is undetermined at this time. conspiracy, and the other one is undetermined at this time. So a big issue right now is our shootings. The graph indicates the number of shooting incidents in 2018 as compared to 2017. So at this time in 2017, there were 21 victims. Currently, we actually have 44 victims, because when the chart was done, this says 42, but we currently have two more in the past week. So of, as of April 23rd, reports of aggravated assaults resulting in citizens being shot currently stands at 34 incidents, to include the five homicides. And of these 34 incidents, 44 victims have been shot. So the black dots indicate one victim per incident, the red dot indicates there were two victims in one incident, and a green dot indicates there were three victims in that one or single incident. So this is a 68% increase of shooting incidents and 100% increase of gunshot victims as compared to the same period in 2017. A careful review and analysis of the, analysis of these incidents is being conducted by our Criminal Investigative Unit, as well as our Crime Analysis Unit. As you can see from the map, there is no concentrated area of incidents in any given neighborhood. However, the majority of the incidents have occurred in our District One area, the, our most southern district. As previously stated, the Crime Analysis Unit had worked with major crimes to determine any causational factors or relationships for the shootings. And currently, we know that four of the gunshot wounds were drug-related, eight involved street robberies. The remaining 17 are still under determination. However, investigative tips and leads to either, they lead to either a neighborhood dispute or disputes among citizens. In the last 17, the victims were acquaintances with suspects either from their neighborhood, school, or work. And as you may be aware, one constant barrier in obtaining facts and getting the cases resolved faster is the increase in uncooperative victims, and more importantly, I mean, uncooperative witnesses, and more importantly, uncooperative victims. This includes at least five Portsmouth School students who were recently shot with being the most uncooperative. We will work with the schools and engage the parents to try and address this growing issue. We continue to work diligent, diligently and tirelessly to bring offenders to justice with the goal of enhancing the quality of life for our citizens. And as a result, we are reinstituting several initiatives that appear to have an impact on our crime reduction last year, to include our Violent Crimes Task Force, which we re-initiated last weekend. So we have those individuals, individual officers covering our hot zones, say like where you see all the dots, to try and increase patrols and focus on specific areas to try and reduce the violence in those areas. And we also reinstituted our Downtown Vagrant Initiative last weekend to address the individuals hanging out downtown. And just as a side note, we have our upcoming Community Engagement Walk this Thursday in the Port Norfolk neighborhood, if anyone would like to join us. And that's all I have. Yes, ma'am.
Chief, not, not that it matters to people in Portsmouth who are victims of these shootings, but it seems, listening to the news every night, that this is happening all over the region. Am I right?
You are correct. It is not unique to Portsmouth. There are shootings all over the region. There are too many guns.
But what's the, what's the driver? Is it drugs? Is it domestic?
Well, that's what I pointed out. In ours, we, I believe, I said there were four, oh, I didn't... Currently, four of our gunshots were drug-related, eight involved street robberies, and the other is kind of undetermined. But it appears to be some type of neighborhood, we can't say they're gangs yet, but they're known acquaintances either from the neighborhood, or school, or work. So we're still trying to work with our Crime Analysis and our Detective Units. And also, they speak to other regions. Because a lot of correlation is with us in Norfolk. So the gang units, they talk and try and determine what we do.
Can we get an, can we get an update tomorrow on the police-involved shooting that is hitting the media today?
I cannot speak to the police involvement. It is an investigative, investigation. It was handled by the Virginia State Police. They did the investigation and currently sent in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office for her review. So it is evident, so I cannot speak to the video audience.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, one of the things that the chief and the superintendent and I have talked about is that this is April, and we have had five students who are in school to be involved in shooting, as many as last Saturday night when three 16-year-old males were shot. And we do have a, I remember when I first came, like in 15, we were having something, we, we pulled out the curfew, started talking about what is in, on the books with curfew. And we put in place, you, I think you, we put in place where the safe place was, where police would take these kids when they found them out at night. Our concern is that we have to put something in place. I said to Dr. Bracy that we hold a summit, try to get some of these parents, because as we all know, police cannot solve these issues. We, we've got to get to whatever the root is, and, you know, where children are at night. So we are concerned, this is, we've not had this kind of shooting of teenagers, and we're just got to put something in place to try to address it. But this, for the last two weekends, we've had teen shootings.
You answered my question about Sector One, me having the highest concentration of crimes. I mean, and I don't know how the percentage works, but we don't want people to think that, you know, we're delegating all of our officers now to one, and now Sector Two, and, and three are not covered. But is there a percentage of the ones that you pulled, or how did you come up with who is going to serve in Sector One now?
The, we have not pulled officers. When we went to geographical policing, those officers are assigned to those districts. We have to use overtime to try and supplement the resources in that area. So that's why we, we don't do it year-round. We have to look at the budget and determine if we have the resources to add extra officers. Because, I mean, although we're working hard on our, increasing our staffing, currently we have 14 in academy, which will be great, but they don't come out till June. So, and we're working on the next set, but, so in the meantime, we have to use overtime initiative to try. And so you're not pulling resources from the regular, the other districts.
You're adding up.
Correct.
Other question? All right.
Okay. Thank you all.
Mayor, my speech concludes the presentations for tonight.
We are adjourned to begin tomorrow at 5:00.